Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order for the Sacramento City Council, March 26, 2019, at 5:03 PM. If the clerk could please call the roll.
Member Ashby, Member Warren, Member Harris, Member Hanson, Member Shanir, Member Jennings, Member Carr, Mayor Steinberg, Vice Mayor Guerra.
Here.
We have a quorum. Tonight's meeting is being video streamed and can be reviewed live or later on the city's website. If you're here tonight to address the council, please complete a speaker slip that are located in the back window and then turn it to the clerk. They must be received before the start of the item. All members of the council and members of the public are asked to observe our rules of decorum, which are outlined, excuse me, outlined on your speaker slip, but for instance, avoiding the use of swear words, yelling from the audience, or any physical threatening conduct. Each speaker will be provided two minutes to address the council. This is the time to turn your cell phones and any other devices to silent or off. Also, if you need an assisted listening or speaking device or parking validation, you would also see the assistant clerk. Chair, also, we have three items tonight that are on the calendar that will be continued. That will be our shared writable businesses and service and repair of industrial zones. Those both will be continued till April 2nd, and the code relating to tobacco business will be continued to April 16.
Okay, what are the numbers on those?
I will tell you with one moment. The shared writable is Item 2. Industrial zones and transit-oriented development is Item 3, and the code relating tobacco retailers is Item 5.
Okay, so Items 2, 3, and 5 will be continued. So for those of those folks who are here today, we'll see you when they are re-calendered. With that, if you could all join me and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Salute.
Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, someday, not here.
All right, thank you very much. Before we get started here with our consent calendar, we do have one of two presentations to do. The first presentation, Madam Clerk.
We have, the first one is recognizing Sonia Fay for her contributions to Latino arts and culture.
Good. And Ms. Sonia Fay, if you could please come to the podium. Great, thank you for coming here today.
Hi, my name is Jade Nicole. I'm with MagnaMopus, Studio of the Stars, and Talent magazines. Sonia Fay is one of the artists that we've been representing for a couple of years. She's currently out of the city, so I'll be speaking on her behalf. Sonia Fay represents cultural diversity for Sacramento. Her work goes back to the '70s, painting murals in Los Angeles and being a part of the Chicano Arts Movement. And for many of the women that got started with the Chicano Arts Movement, they were behind the scenes doing all of the work, and most of them haven't been recognized for their contributions to the Latino arts culture. Most of Sonia's shows are in Los Angeles, where her work sells out. One of her collectors is Cheech from Cheech and Chong, and her work is at the National Museum for Latino Arts and Culture. We were successful last year with getting her in wide-open walls. However, we weren't successful in giving this woman recognition that's long overdue. Some of her murals that she's painted are on historical registries. She tells cultural stories of women's rights issues, the rights of immigrant children, issues for the African-American community, Jewish and Latino. And one of the challenges that she had with, when she was here in Sacramento, she was a resident here for 14 years, she's gonna be moving back this year, was she was embraced by the Latino community, but she wasn't embraced by her Jewish culture. She is Jewish, African-American, and Latino. I believe that she's one of the most prolific artists that have came out of Sacramento. I recently had the pleasure of meeting Irma Babousa. She's one of the founding members, women members, of the Royal Chicano Air Force. And the things that we're fighting for today, still in our arts community, she was fighting for almost 50 years ago. So there's still a lot of work that we need to do to make sure that our arts community is more inclusive of women, minorities, and the disabilities community.
Great.
If you take a look at our arts community, it is, you don't see women in leadership. It's primarily white men. And the concern that I have with that is, why is our cultural diversity for our city being controlled by white men? When are women, minorities, and the disabilities gonna have a seat at the table of their movement? And I'm hoping today that we could restart a new history for Sacramento that celebrates talent of all cultures, and how we celebrate talent that represents cultural diversity as we give them the same support as we would wide-open walls, art street, the farm-to-fork movement, the urban hive, the hacker lab, Visit Sacramento. Do you hear of any minority names or women? We deserve an opportunity to showcase and represent our city. We're invited to the dance, but we're not allowed to dance. So I'm hoping that this resolution, we could create some changes that benefits everyone in our arts community.
Thank you for your time, and we're remiss that we wouldn't have Ms. Sonia Fay here today, but let's give her a round of applause so she could hear us as well. Thank you very much. And we're gonna have one more recognition before we move on to the consent calendar.
That would be Sylvia Fort on her retirement.
Ms. Fort, would you like, so I think we're done.
Up, down.
Thank you. Ms. Fort, would you like to come up here? So, how do you wanna do this?
I would like to kick it off, if you wouldn't mind, Councilmember. Good evening, Vice Chair, members of the council. My name is Shannon Brown. I'm the interim director for the Department of Youth, Parks, and Community Enrichment, and tonight we're here to celebrate Sylvia Fort. Almost 40-plus years ago, Sylvia began working at the city of Sacramento as a swimming pool cashier, and quickly moved up the ranks and served in many roles in our department, from Oak Park Community Center Director to Recreation Manager, and has overseen nearly every division in our department, including Children's Services, Teen Programming, Park Maintenance, Aquatics, Community Centers, Older Adults, Special Events, Access Leisure, and Camp Sacramento. Sylvia has constantly served as a voice for the youth, and it has been her life's work to bring programs to address the needs of our youth in our communities. Sylvia was the lead in developing the Community Access Program at Pennell Community Center, which is an extended evening program for youth and their families. This free program offers a place for social interaction and building family unity, and Sylvia's there every Wednesday. Another notable program Sylvia began is the Primetime Teen Program, which provides opportunity for hundreds of youth each year by teaching them workforce readiness and community service opportunities. The city of Sacramento is a better place because of her devotion to improving the quality of life for all that live in Sacramento. Sylvia will be missed dearly by everyone, but we wish her all the happiness with her new adventures in retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I'm really happy to be able to congratulate you on your retirement. I am really sad that you are leaving, because we are doing so many good things, and so many of those things trace back to your work over the last 48 years.
Okay.
I mean, it's amazing you started when I was two years old.
I got in, you know, I put I was 12 on my application.
Oh, 12, that's almost 18. So I appreciate that. You know, institutional memory in an organization like this is so important, and you have, as Shannon said, you have done so many jobs within the city of Sacramento, but all of them have had a common thread, and that common thread has really been what you can do to benefit our young people as we move forward. You know, I think you have been just so valuable to so many people and so many young people in growing up. I'm sure that there are those who came back and say, "Oh yeah, when I was 12 years old, I remember you," and now I'm 50. So it's really, you know, a wonderful time. Shannon went through a lot of the accomplishments that you have, and we obviously have a resolution for you, but this is a piece of paper, and your heart, I know, has been with the city for so long. I just wanna say thank you on behalf of my colleagues here on the dais, on behalf of all of the young people that you have served, and I wanna ask all of your comrades-in-arms here who are working with young people to stand up, because they've come here to salute you as well. So if you came here for Sylvia, please stand. I don't think there's any better testament to the work you've done than all of these folks showing up for you to say goodbye.
Thank you.
I was talking to Kim Muller a bit ago, and she was saying, and you so predate me, but you worked with my wife here, right, for many years, and Kim was talking, a couple weeks ago, we were talking about you and Bina and Kim going down, you know, to San Francisco every week to see what was going on with the Community Network for Youth Development, right?
Yes.
CMYD, so that we could bring those lessons up here. I will just say, Sylvia, you will be sorely missed.
Thank you.
You are such an important piece here, and I hope we're not losing all of you. There's this retired and new within thing that...
Okay.
I'm sure that we're gonna try to reel you back in for something, but again, just on behalf of everyone, of every young person whose life you touched, I just wanna say thank you, and we will miss you greatly. So I know that some of my colleagues wanna say a couple of words, and then maybe we could do a picture, and this is an entire council picture. I mean, 48 years, you get everyone here.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Well, thank you very much, Councilmember Shanira. Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Sylvia. Thank you very much. We're gonna miss you. You know, when I would go to the Pennell Center, you were always there. In fact, at first I thought you owned that place. And I have, you know, had an opportunity to observe you and how you relate to the young people there, and it's really heartwarming to see, especially the young girls, how you mother them, how you make sure they stay in line, but also make sure they have a good time. And it's really been a pleasure watching you work, observing you from close and afar, and thank you for all your service, for all the years you put in, and for the kids that you've helped.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Warren, Alan Warren.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Sylvia, I just wanna say, you know, what an honor it was to have you here at the city with us, and Councilman Shanira said you predated him, but not by much, okay?
Okay.
So, but, you know, your commitment to our city and to the people that live here, you know, I think is, has been extraordinary, and I just really wanna emphasize that I hope you enjoy your retirement. I want you to live it to the fullest, you know, do all the things that you had hoped to do, and you've earned every bit of it, and all the folks that have come here to help send you off the right way, I think is also just a wonderful testament to who you are as a person, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, Sylvia, you are a real bright light in the city. I just wanna say that it's been a delight to get to know you just a little bit, but, you know, we've rubbed shoulders for, I guess, almost nine years now, and I appreciate every time that our paths crossed. So thank you so much for your city service. You're really a wonderful person.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you very much. So we've been doing this for many, many years. I can't quite say 48.
Okay.
But I had no idea that you had served the city for 48 years, and that's an accomplishment in itself, and to do such a great job at every area that you've worked in, and when you take a look at the number of people who are here in support of your retirement, it speaks volumes about the difference that you've made in the lives of those who are here and all the people who you touched, whose paths crossed your way. And so I just say congratulations to you. I bring you congratulations also from Ms. Jennings.
Okay.
And she had the opportunity to work with you long before I did, and she wanted to make sure that I told you that her love, respect is the highest for you in this day of your retirement. So congratulations. We are always here for you. We hope that you will come back and give us a little bit of your wisdom and your knowledge and your presence, and we wish you the best of luck in your future.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Sylvia, thank you for your commitment to youth, your commitment to the future of our city is something that we all appreciate, and you've done it for so many years, you've changed the landscape for so many young people, and for that, I think she deserves a huge round of applause from the city of Sacramento. Give a big round of applause for Sylvia.
Thank you. I'd just like to say, thank you, everyone, and my tenure here with the city, it's been great. I've built a lot of relationships with youth and the community as a whole, and working with people, it's been a pleasure, and I have no regrets. City is a great place to work. Yipsey is a great place to work. We are the best.
Well, thank you very much. So we'll take a quick photo with Sylvia and all her colleagues here, and if the council members could come up closely, and all her colleagues will join her for a quick photo If you're a fan of Sylvia, come on and join us down. Forty years of service. That is...
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight years of service, commendable forty-eight years of service to our young people.
How many years before you were conceived?
Okay, thank you very much. Well, with that, we will continue on to our consent calendar. Oh, no, oh, no, the public here. Okay, good. We'll ask for the first item on the agenda from the clerk.
Weed and rubbish abatement?
I never...
Mr. Vice Chair, as staff comes down, I was wondering if they could do the presentations all at once, and then we could take the motions on the three items.
If there's any objection, if not, we will go ahead and do all the presentations up at once. Mr. Mendez, are you okay with that?
Yes. Hi, good evening. Thank you. Good evening, Jose Mendez, good enforcement manager. I'm here to recommend that this council authorize the Community Development Department to abate weeds, rubbish, and refuge from properties constituting a public nuisance. I'm available should there be any objections or comments related to this item, and that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members from the public signed up to speak on this item?
Yes, sir.
There are no items, no members of the public signed up to speak. I'll take a motion in a second.
So moved.
Was that for all three?
There's only one.
Oh, okay.
So moved.
We have to open and close the public hearing?
I will open and close the public hearing and move the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to open and close the public hearing. Any further discussion from the council? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. If the clerk could please call the next item.
Item 2 has been continued, item 3 as well. Then item 4 is Environmental Impact Report and Preliminary Design Approval for the Del Rio Trail Project.
Great, thank you.
Well, good afternoon, Vice Mayor Guerra. My name is Jesse Gothin. I'm with the City of Sacramento Public Works Department, Engineering Services Division. I'm also the Del Rio Trail Project Manager. I had a PowerPoint here, Wendy.
Thanks, just...
I'm pulling that up. So first order of business, I'd like to read a statement into the record for the resolution. Section 8, the Preliminary Engineering Plans for the Del Rio Trail Project, K-15165100, a copy of which are in the EIR, are approved. And also for the record, I'd like to state that the additional comments we received after the final EIR was released do not require revision or recirculation of the EIR, because those issues were already addressed in the EIR. So once again, Vice Mayor Guerra, I'm happy to be here before you today for this project and rest of members of the city council. I'd like to rehearse some of the milestones that we've achieved on our way to this night. First being on May 17, 2016, the city council established the CIP. Also, on that same date, the city council resolved to acquire some supplemental properties from the federal lands for Palomar Circle access point, a future connection for the project. And once we launched the CIP later that year, January 19, 2017 actually, we hired Doc in Engineering, who's also with me tonight, to begin the engineering, preliminary engineering plans, the project scoping, and the environmental clearance. Then on December 11, 2017, we presented the project to the Board of Directors for the regional transit, regional transit to review the project. We returned on February 26, 2018, to the RT Board of Directors, who made an intent motion to transfer approximately 50 acres for the benefit of the project, noticing its overall benefits to the transportation network and also the existing first mile, last mile access to several of the regional transit bus routes. Just recently, SAICOG, in December 2018, the Board of Directors voted to program $6 million towards the construction of the trail, and we've also been working with SAICOG on the potential to swap an additional $3.983 million for a total of $9.983 million for the construction of the trail. So let me briefly recap the scope of the project. As you know from the project documentation, the project is approximately 4.8 miles. It starts in the northern segment shown here at the Sacramento River Parkway. This is where the project connects to the Sacramento River Parkway and crosses over I-5, Canalevering on the existing Land Park Bridge, crossing over Riverside, and there's access points proposed to Riverside Boulevard near Darnell and also San Mateo. This is very close to Land Park and Riverside Boulevard and also Pacific Little League. Another typical section of the project, this shows the crossing of Sutterville, also Southland Park Drive. You see the purple line denotes the existing rail tracks, the green denotes rail tracks that would be removed for the benefit of the project. The project connects to many east-west arterial and collector roadways, which provide access points such as Sutterville, Southland Park Drive, Florin, Meadowview, Fruit Ridge Boulevard, 35th Avenue, just to name a few. So once again, the purpose and need of the project, paraphrased here, that's also noted in the draft in the EIR that's before you, is to advance and complete the planned connections between the Sac River Parkway and the Freeport Shores Bike Way. This is noted in the city's Bicycle Master Plan. It's to connect logical origins and destinations proximate to the trail alignment through many different neighborhoods, Southland Park, Freeport Manor, Zeeburg, Land Park, Meadowview, and Pocket Communities. It's to provide an ADA-compliant access, active transportation connection to adjacent communities throughout the South Sacramento area for peds, bikes of all ages, abilities, and incomes to access schools, retail, jobs, and recreational amenities. So finally, who will use this trail? So whether it's the students who attend Sutterville Elementary, the Pony Express, Holy Spirit, John Cabrillo Elementary, Sam Brandon Middle School, or the residents of Cabrillo Park, Southland Park, all could use it to visit Sprouts, Rayleigh's, Bel-Air, the community will be transformed by a safe, multi-use, active modes facility within the neighborhoods that currently do not have an existing trail facility. Finally, it'll provide a key connection to the Central Business District for daily bike commuters. In terms of community outreach, we've done several public meetings. We've held four community-wide meetings to gain input on the project. We've been to the Southland Park Neighborhood Association annual meeting several times. We've done special presentations to the Land Park Community Association, the Cabrillo Neighborhood Association. We've been to the Sutterville Elementary School PTA, the Regional Transit Board of Directors, as previously noted, and to the California State Railroad Foundation, and also to Preservation Sacramento. We have attended community events such as the National Night Out. So what's some of the feedback that we've heard? As with any meaningful project, there has been some critics and some opponents. For example, here's the Sutterville Road Crossing. One of the main concerns we heard about was safety, and just how we would build safety into the future crossing. So here's an example of Sutterville Crossing, which we're proposing to be a signalized crossing. This is similar for Fruit Ridge Road would be a signalized crossing. We're also using flashing beacons at Southland Park Drive. So we're deploying the most current methods for safe and controlled crossings with the project. Other issues we heard about existing encroachments and how we would deal with them. We've noted that we would work with those on a case-by-case, but the trail needs to be free and clear for access and safe construction. We've asked those concerned to show us documentation of any rights of access they may have. Finally, the impacts to tree removal, we've noted that we will be following the city's tree ordinance. So finally, we've seen that there's the fear that we'll be destroying a future rail expansion or excursion line. So we've worked with members from the Rail Foundation, State Parks, and while some are happy with the concessions that we've made, as noted by some of the comments that you may hear tonight, not all are satisfied. The project team has reduced the impacts to the rail. In fact, we have preserved nearly all of the rail along the corridor. We're only removing about 2% for the project, and so the residents and the project team mostly agree that a rail-themed aesthetic would be welcome, but not trains. The project honors the historic resource. Our consultant and state agencies have concluded that removal of the tracks within the street intersections needed for safety reasons does not create significant adverse impacts to the historic railroad alignment. Finally, I'd like to conclude with some of the partnerships that have formed just around this project. We've worked with the Sacramento Tree Foundation and Jennifer Zaligna and Lauren O'Rourke to identify future areas where we can plant trees. She's noted one of the main things she needs is land where she can plant. So we see that by acquiring the property and building the project, there's many opportunities to plant trees. We've partnered with UC Davis School of Landscape Architecture, where Professor Prashant Hadeo for three-quarters has used this project in this corridor for his students to come up with design ideas and how, what opportunities could be used along the corridor. And finally, as I mentioned before, we've partnered with Regional Transit on the corridor. So finally, we've attempted to partner with California State Railroad Foundation, State Parks. We've only fallen short on one issue, and that is this, we're proposing to build a multi-use path, not a future rail excursion. That simply is a different effort with a different scope, purpose, and need. However, the project concepts we are proposing are designed in such a way as to maximize the current resource. So closing remarks, whether it's Theodore Judah dreaming of the Transcontinental Railroad or Eisenhower's vision of an interstate highway system, or a dream of extending an excursion line, I'm here today representing a community and city vision for an interconnected network of off-street trails. Approving the Del Rio Trail is a major step towards that implementation. So with the opportunity to make history by approving this project, we recommend you motion to certify the final environmental documentation and approve the preliminary plans. Thank you for your time, and with that, the project team is here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gothin. We have 24 people signed up to speak on this item here. We're gonna go ahead and start with the opposition to the item first, if that's okay with you, Councilmember Shanira. with you, Councilmember Chenier, and then we'll go with the supporters of this item. So the clerk will call folks individually, and she'll repeat the two-minute requirements for -- for there are a lot of time to speak.
Okay. So we'll call you down if you can come down as we call your name, and you will be given two minutes to speak. Our first is going to be Minnie Huni, followed by Asha Mizur and Dave and Carol Abelson. Minnie?
Hi. I'm actually Pam, first time doing this. I'm a retired employee of Regional Transit and have followed the dilemma with this path. I also am a maintenance away worker for Sac Southern Railroad. We've maintained the tracks all the way up to Sutterville so far and had great hopes of continuing this historic training for the future of our children, our grandchildren. And it would be just such a travesty to tear out something that this city should grab a hold of and keep. To say that the tracks are going to stay there, that's just like that building they're tearing down along Richards Boulevard. Yeah, it's just a hole right now. Sure, it's going to still be the building, but it's not going to be what it was. To tear this out would be astronomical -- would be an astronomical mistake. It would be -- and all of you would be the ones that did this terrible thing. I mean, we are the ones that fixed the track. Another thing is, all that stuff he's talking about, sure, it's all fine and dandy, but it's the great cost. We work for free. We get a donut in the morning, we go out and we work on the tracks because there's hundreds of volunteers that care about this, that show up all the time and have for years. We've always, even when Regional Transit -- and he threw Regional Transit out there. They really don't care what happens to the track anymore because they haven't used it for years. We actually maintained part of it, fixed part of it, and then when we went to try to put the train down there, we couldn't -- we weren't allowed to. So we're still fighting for the dream to have this train go all the way down. We own past that. We can have this train run all the way to Hood. I mean, we could be magnificent as far as history goes. Does it -- has anybody ridden the Reno train? That's one of the most historic -- one of the top five historic routes from Sacramento to Reno, if anybody's ever ridden it. I mean, we could be -- we could have a whole nother line that's that historic. That track's been there since 1902. To say that it's still going to be there on this walk path that's going to go behind people's yards so that anybody going by can look into their yards, I wouldn't want that. They can put a bike trail anywhere. And if you're going to do it, keep the track, keep the train, and make the bike path go along the sides. There's no reason you can't work it out. I mean, to tear it out is just a travesty. I can't say that enough. And you guys will go down, just like tearing down the Alhambra and everything else, you'll be the ones that everybody will remember that did this horrible thing. And my name is Pam. That was just my nickname.
Ma'am, could you see the clerk? Because I don't have a speaker slip for you.
Oh, she said that was her nickname.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that is me.
Your Minnie?
It's a nickname. Yeah, I'm sorry. Somebody --
That's okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Asha Mizur, followed by David and Carol Abelson.
Mr. Vice Mayor, just a point of order. I'd just like to remind the audience that when you clap, people can't hear who's being called, so please save your applause for after.
Thank you, Councilmember Hassan.
Good afternoon. My name is Asha Mizur. I'm here on behalf of the Sacramento Rail Preservation Action Group. We've submitted detailed comments at various junctures, including some additional comments on the final EIR today. And we've worked to bring our group's concerns, who are looking to preserve the rail while the trail is built at the same time, and suggest resolution of those concerns. And it's just very unfortunate that this project, as proposed today, is not set up as the win-win that it could be easily. There are -- all that needs to happen is the alternatives that we've been suggesting and discussing in terms of the crossings, and we don't need to take out the railroad trestle in order to have the trail. There can be a separate bridge for the trail. So there's a lot of options available, but unfortunately, city staff and perhaps due to pressure from some very well-heeled neighbors who purchased their homes with disclosures of the excursion train coming through the neighborhood, have put undue pressure on the city and prevented a win-win solution thus far. And so I have suggested in the letter you've received today that the City Council do go ahead and approve the project, but direct staff to remove all the project elements that would remove the tracks or other components of the 24.5-mile Walnut Grove Branch Line, which is a national historic resource that can be used today, which is quite unique throughout this country. And then that the city should confer with the rail group and other persons knowledgeable about crossings to figure out some of the technical details, so those can be safely done, which is possible, and then commit to work with all the parties, including State Parks and the neighbors, to make sure that there are reasonable solutions around the concerns that we've heard about the neighbors. Remember, no one is proposing running trains through here on a daily basis. What we're trying to preserve is a railroad. And a railroad, by definition, needs to be connected.
If any two minutes are up.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm going to give the city clerk a map that is of the Walnut Grove Branch Line to distribute.
Great. Thank you very much. And we'll make sure that she gets them to the council members.
Thank you.
David and Carol Abelson, followed by Jim Garcia and Ron Cox.
Councilmembers, thank you very much for giving me a moment or two to speak. I didn't bring a PowerPoint, but I do have the written document that I intend to submit. And with your permission, I'd like to hand it to you to look at the photos that are on one page. Is that acceptable?
Yes, we'll go ahead and pass them to the clerk.
I'd like to start by clarifying something. I'm actually not, nor my wife, opposed to the project, even though I had only two choices, which is support or oppose. We do have concerns, and they're very serious concerns regarding the landscaping and arbor issues. Thank you so much for being able to put that up on the screen. I didn't realize you all were able to do that. The corridor between Fruit Ridge and Sutterville is particularly rich in old oak trees and a tremendous natural canopy of a diverse range of trees. What the EIR has done is punt the entire issue of what to do about trees to the Sacramento City Code, Section 1256, for the city of trees. The problem with that is that the council, at this moment, nor any of us, have any idea which of the 220 trees are going to be cut down. We have no idea what mitigation will be provided other than planting replacement trees, which of course will not be of this size for 20 or 30 years. And finally, there is a legal and procedural flaw in the way 1256 is set up as it relates to CEQA. That flaw is that upon a final ruling by the ALJ or the Administrative Law Judge, there is no appeal to this council. The appeal is directly to the courts. So the bottom line is, the tree issues have not been identified with specificity. We've not been able to determine any mitigation that may be important. It's a gorgeous corridor, and the hearing process, which is punted to, is inadequate for either the council or ourselves to get a hearing in. So thank you for those comments. We would request a supplemental EIR on that issue.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Jim Garcia, followed by Ron Cox and Paul Hellman.
Mr. Vice -- Mr. Vice Mayor and City Council Members, thank you for this opportunity. I am here in today in support of preserving history within our community. With your gavel, you can decree that parts of this rail line be entombed to enable construction of the Del Rio Trail. However, in behalf of historians, interpreters, and future generations, I humbly ask that you challenge your engineers, architects, and designers to come up with an alternative that permits continuity of this rail line. Removing rail and casing parts of the railroad in concrete makes it cost prohibitive for future generations to consider restoring the rail line for trains to travel from Old Sacramento to our historic communities south of the city. Maintaining the South Sacramento rail line is vital to preserve the region's heritage that serves a significant educational and entertainment venue. How often do we sit with our children, grandchildren, and others to reflect on the past, simply relying on memories? Our memories may fade, but actually may come back to life when you augment your scene with your personal narrative. This is the opportunity that you have before you, an opportunity to preserve the rail line that gives family members, interpreters, and others a way of eventually riding a train through our historic railroad, sharing stories, and using their imagination as they look back in time. Once a decision is made that removes or alters a railway or trail, there's no way to restore it. Just look around you, and you will see the many fragments of history that have been preserved by others. Listen to your heart, listen to your -- our need to preserve living history. Removing rails, altering crossings, railways, et cetera, along this line destroys the historic nature of the region. Please do the right thing and preserve our history and enable our children, families, and visitors to our destination city to embark in a train back in time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Ron Cox, followed by Paul Hellman and Cheryl Marcel.
Hello. I'm a resident of Land Park and a docent at the Railroad Museum. I live very close to the tracks and have walked the tracks from where I live to Old Sacramento several times. I'm not opposed to the trail. I think it'd be wonderful. I could ride my bicycle to Old Sac when I'm volunteering at the museum. But the railroad is a very important part of Sacramento, and it seems to be underappreciated by the city of Sacramento. It draws in tourists from all over the country and all over the world. As a conductor on the train, I know, because I talk to many of these people, so it is a big tourist attraction. And to be able to have a train that would run from Freeport to Hood would add to that for the travelers coming to Sacramento. So many areas have rails to trails, where they share their sale -- I can't even talk -- trails and rails, and it works. And I don't understand why there's opposition to this here. I've attended some of the meetings, the Land Park meetings, and I've seen you there, and some of the stuff they're putting out is ridiculous. I mean, there are issues, but like I say, I was there last time, and I just looking at the pictures they were posting and stuff, I'm going, this is childish. I don't understand it. So I want to see us have rails and trails and keep the tradition of our railroad alive. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Paul Hellman, followed by Cheryl Marcel and Antero Rivasplata.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and City Council Members. Tonight, you're being asked to vote on acceptance of the Del Rio Trails Project final EIR. I encourage a no vote. I'm opposed to the project as it is now described in the FEIR, but I'm totally and absolutely supportive of a pedestrian bike trail going through the project corridor. I'm in opposition because the project, as currently defined, removes what is described as small portions of rail. However, removed rail, no matter how small, renders a rail line unusable. Removing the rail at grade crossings, as proposed in the FEIR, makes any future use of the historic Walnut Grove Branch extremely problematic. California State Parks, through the Sacramento Southern Railroad, which is an interpretive program of the California State Railroad Museum unit of the Old Sacramento Historic Park, has always planned on using the rail in question for access to a long-planned excursion going south from Freeport to Hood. This excursion opens up portions of the Delta region not seen by many and would provide an enjoyable and pleasant opportunity for the Sacramento region to use for local school groups, outdoor enthusiasts, regional and national historians to experience the Delta, something that will expand Sacramento's presence on any map. Access to this long-planned excursion is necessary for its success. Rail equipment needs to be delivered and used and maintained for -- on a routine basis. Rail access provides that ability. Delivery and maintenance needs would be very in frequent use of the rail line through residential areas. Low-speed operation would make the disturbance less than any of the daily helicopter flights we experience many times. Severing a rail, even one 33-foot piece, renders this impossible. The issue is, do you vote to essentially eliminate a future rail excursion venue that celebrates Sacramento's rich agricultural history, or do you vote to allow this future state park program to exist, flourish, and thus burnishing the past and future history of Sacramento? Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your comments.
Cheryl Marcel.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Guerra, members of the council. We do have some overheads here, if you'd like to use those. I'm Cheryl Marcel. I'm the president and CEO of the California State Railroad Museum Foundation here in Old Sacramento, a member of D-2, District 2 representative as well, a member. I am just here to clear up a few misconceptions that perhaps you may have. We absolutely support the trail with the rail. There has never been any dispute about that. We want to see a bike trail. In fact, I did bring one of our historic photos of the train going by the bike trail as it currently exists. So we are operating out of Old Sacramento on a regular basis on the weekends, right by the bike trail, so we know that it can work. As previous Speaker Paul Hellman pointed out, this access to the 4.5 miles in Del Rio Trail is only used on occasion to move equipment back and forth. So the general plan for California State Parks has long envisioned a new excursion line from Pocket Road to Hood. The only way that makes sense for us is to occasionally run trains through that track section back to Old Sacramento for maintenance and repair. It's not a daily occurrence. In fact, in the general plan that was approved in June of 2014, it only calls for three operations of the Pocket Road to Hood line, three operations on a weekend that we normally have excursion trains. So if you factor that in, the opportunity to have the trains actually move back through to Old Sacramento is very, very infrequent. We appreciate city staff and their efforts to work with us and partner with us. We speak for railroad history. We speak for railroad preservation. We speak for the 150 years that we've completed the Transcontinental Railroad, which we're celebrating here in May, and we ask you just to consider those concerns as you make this momentous decision tonight. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Antero Rivasplata, Mike Roque, and then Greg Lukembil.
Do you mind repeating those names?
Antero Rivasplata, Mike Roque, and then Greg Lukembil.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor and Council, I'm Antero Rivasplata. I live near the train. I have several concerns about the project. My main concern, though, is the lack of detail in the environmental impact report. I don't believe that it allows you to make an informed decision on this project the way it's written right now, and I disagree strongly with staff in that I believe it needs to be recirculated. As it currently stands, the EIR is inadequate for a number of reasons. Number one is, the project description has been greatly expanded from the time of the draft EIR until the final EIR. The draft EIR had no discussion of the berms and how large the berms are going to be, the construction of the berms, nor did it have any discussion of the safety -- safety issues that were going to be put in along these street crossings. This means that air quality and noise issues relating to construction of the berms has been completely left out of the EIR, and then also, the new berm north of Sutterville is going to be extremely large. There's no discussion there of how big that's going to be. We've gone out and actually measured it. It'll need a good 12 to 15 feet of additional right-of-way built as a new berm adjacent to the existing portion north of Sutterville. There's also inadequate analysis of aesthetics, as mentioned by an earlier speaker. We have no idea where those trees are going to be removed, or let alone which trees are going to be removed, and because of that, it's not possibly determined whether or not there's an aesthetic impact. Traffic controls were not in the draft EIR that now pop up in the new EIR. We believe, or I believe, that it needs to be recirculated. Also, there are a number of mitigation measures that for secret purposes are deferred and therefore are not proper mitigation measures. They're open-ended. They call for plans to be done in the future without providing any sort of specifics as to what the performance standards of those plans are going to be. So in conclusion, there's new impacts from berm construction that are not covered. There's significant changes to the draft EIR, and recirculation should be done before proceeding with the project.
Thank you for your comments tonight.
Mike Roque, followed by Greg Lukembil and Mary Heimlich.
Sir, if you could please quiet your cellphone.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Mike Roque. I'm a director with the Folsom Eldorado and Sacramento Historical Railroad Association, as well as the Road Foreman of Engines.
Hold on one minute, sir. We're going to quiet the cellphone here first. We'll go ahead and restart your time here in one quick second.
Are you ready to detain them?
Again, my name is Mike Roque. I'm a director with the Folsom Eldorado and Sacramento Historical Railroad Association. I'm also the Road Foreman of Engines at Placerville and Sacramento Valley Railroad, a tourist railroad based in Folsom, California, on the Placerville branch. I support rails with trails. The Walnut Grove Branch Railroad Corridor is a priceless historic asset and regional treasure that we have a duty to protect and preserve in its entirety for both future rail use as well as other uses, including trails and other development. I fully support a trail along the corridor, but I urge the council to reject any plan that would remove any track or other railroad infrastructure on the corridor or otherwise prevent rail use, and instead require that any corridor development support equal access for both rails and trails, just like between Old Sacramento and the I-5 overpass, excuse me, and other corridors in the region, like the Placerville branch between Folsom and Placerville, where trains coexist alongside trails. Removal of any length of track on the line will effectively destroy the continuity and thus functionality thus functionality of the corridor for rail use, as was discussed. Any segment of rail that's missing prevents rail use. There's no reason that rails and trails cannot coexist, and indeed, that would be the best way to balance our duty to preserve Sacramento's railroad history and infrastructure with the desire for trail development along an existing railroad corridor. Please do not allow the Del Rio Trail to destroy this historic railroad route that is an integral part of Sacramento's and California's rich railroad history. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight.
Greg Lukembil, followed by Mary Heimlich.
I'm going to set this down in front because it's not going to be able to be displayed. A couple of the stops that we'll have in the not-too-distant future. I'm Greg Lukembil. I'm speaking for myself. I just want to say that in 1864, Abraham Lincoln gave birth to California State Parks and a movement to set aside lands protecting natural, cultural, and historical resources for the preservation, education, and recreation of future generations. Fifty years ago, California visionaries, and we have some great ones here, William Penn Mott, Denny Onspach, Dr. Denny Onspach, and Governor and future President Ronald Reagan, landed one of the greatest historical terrain collections on the planet and in existence and ended up creating the Railroad Museum to create live railroading from 1972 onward for its Sacramento heritage, Train Riot of Historical Educative Value along the Walnut Grove Branch Line. In 1991 and 1992 and 2007, the Army Corps of Engineers elevated our historic Delta rail line itself to National Historic Recognition from Third and I Street to Walnut Grove for being the link, and that's a quote, "playing a vital crucial role in the subsequent agricultural boom in the region, as well as a vital, as well as the development of the town at Locke, also a historic, national historic district." In 2014, 150 years from Lincoln to Yosemite, California Parks visionary public service had grown from protection of the redwoods and waterways to encompass historic resources. That celebratory year, Capitol Assembly Clerk and now Floor Director Brian Ebert, sitting over here to the right, I'm sure, and Democratic Party Controller Dan Weissman, sitting right back here to the left, how you doing, brother? President Pro Tem of the Senate Gerald Steinberg, who is mysteriously missing for an action tonight, and Mr. Senor, sitting here himself, tortuously interfered with park staff who, and I quote, and this is a quote, "from six different people that were involved in this process, pressured, threatened, bagged, and beaten down into submission to remove specific details of the long-approved historic route to Hood from the state parks' general plan." Steamrolled in 2014. Park staff was steamrolled. Since then, Sacramento city staff has steadily presented...
Lukembil, your time is up.
Thank you, Mr. Lukembil, for your comments.
Okay. The steamroller continues. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mary Heimlich.
Good evening.
Hello. How are you, council members? I'm Mary Heimlich. I'm the author of the newly published, A Legacy in Brick and Iron: Sacramento Central and Southern Pacific Railroad Shops. And tonight, I'd like to offer a few comments about the Del Rio Trail project. While the Sacramento Railroad Shops provided continual innovation and improvements to freight equipment for shipping California fruits and vegetables and other goods, railroad branches like the Sacramento Southern's Walnut Grove Line created the agricultural nexus vital for making our city the historic farm-to-fork capital. As we honor and celebrate our railroad shops in this 150th anniversary year of the Transcontinental Railroad, is my hope that we can agree on the importance of protecting and interpreting our valuable heritage for present and future generations. Shattered by the huge water tank that proclaims our city's motto, the Walnut Grove Branch, a nearly forgotten link to the Sacramento River Delta, runs along the proposed Del Rio Trail for more, and for more than 40 years. State Parks and the California State Railroad Museum have dreamed of an excursion train down between the Pocket Road and Hood. Let me jump to other points. Building the trail and refurbishing the historic line would not only reconnect Sacramento with the Delta region, but also expand our area's enormous potential for heritage tourism. I want to say to enable this, tracks along the Del Rio Trail must be kept intact for future use to permit operational railroad equipment to transit between Pocket Road and Old Sac, locomotives, and railroad car maintenance. It's my understanding that this movement would be infrequent. The alternative of placing and moving railroad equipment on flatbed trucks, she tried to say, would be cost prohibitive. So I thank you for your time and really wish you'd look into keeping the tracks as well as placing trails adjacent to it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Councilmember Hanson, do you have a question for the speaker?
I think you sent each of us a copy of your book. It's really beautiful, and I can talk more about that later, but I just wanted to say thank you. It was really lovely.
Nine years. In the end, thank you.
Thank you for your time and for your work on the literature. The clerk's identified that's the last opposition letter, and she'll go ahead and call individuals in support.
Brian Ebert, followed by Elizabeth Mosby and Robin Netzer.
Hi, I'm Brian Ebert. I'm president of the Southland Park Neighborhood Association, a nonprofit representing an area of over 14,000 residents. About 90% of this project is within our association boundaries. I am happy to be here today to voice our neighborhood's strong support of the city's Del Rio Trail project. I am pleased to report that this project is supported by six neighborhood associations covering about 65,000 residents, including Land Park, Southland Park, Hollywood Park, Pocket Greenhaven, Golf Course Terrace, and Cabrillo Park. The project is also supported by SECOG Regional Transit, several nonprofits and schools, and 83% of residents polled in the project area support the trail. This trail will safely link numerous South Sacramento neighborhoods to parks, schools, and businesses. This trail will be loaded with schoolchildren, errand runners, dog walkers, and bike commuters, a truly green project that promotes air quality and public health. Staff has done a great job with community outreach, as was mentioned. Yes, there is this odd effort to make this vote about nonexistent trains. The Railroad Museum does not own these abandoned tracks. Regional Transit owns the corridor and has signed an agreement to transfer the land to the city for a trail, not a train, and the city is now sitting on $6 million of construction grants to build this project. So please note that the city has bent over backwards and redesigned this trail to preserve 98.2% of the tracks, yet some train enthusiasts are making the bizarre claim that removing a few feet of track ruins the dream of operating an amusement train through the neighborhoods, which was already rejected by state parks. And some train supporters are here claiming that building a community trail next to an abandoned, disjointed, blighted, and dilapidated train track is equivalent to tearing down the Alhambra Theater all over again. Give us a break. It's already missing 100 yards of track. It's not an intact line, so please listen to residents and to common sense and vote in favor of this EIR today.
Thank you, Mr. Ebert.
Elizabeth Mosby, followed by Robin Netzer, and then Susan Hennes.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for letting me be here this evening. I appreciate the staff's work they've done. These are some photographs of 43rd Avenue crossing where the train tracks are. I gave a copy, but it'll be copied to you later. This is what a train would look like coming between the houses at 43rd Avenue. I superimposed it. This is my car here, so it shows you there's a, this is a tree growing up in the middle of the track, so that track has not been used in over 40 years, so I don't know where that came from. Again, this is my car on the train tracks. This is between the houses, Park Village and 14th Street. This is a superimposed figure of the train going between the houses. This is the trail being opened. This is the other side of the street of 43rd Avenue. This is down by the Executive Airport. ADA setbacks, you know, all kinds of laws. You're going imminent domain. If you want to put a train on these tracks to meet all the setback requirements, you're facing some serious, serious lawsuits, and I would encourage you to approve the trail and preserve the history and let people who are into the history do walking tours like they do when we went to Mazatlan last November. It was great, and they pointed out historical places. You don't need a train to preserve history. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you for your comments.
Robin Netzer, followed by Susan Hennes and Brian Bachhaus.
Council members, the Del Rio Trail is a wonderful environmentally friendly project. It promotes public health, active transportation, and safe routes to schools. Compare the trail plan to the pipe dream to introduce locomotives into our neighborhoods, not for mass transit, not for hauling freight, not even for an historically accurate train ride. No, this is about a dinner train to raise money for the Railroad Museum Foundation. Here's what that would mean according to 2014 environmental analysis of the dollar train excursion nightmare. Each and every year, the excursion train project will spew out this pollution. More than 2,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide, two and a half tons of reactive organic gases, three and a half tons of oxides of nitrogen, 34 tons of carbon monoxide, a half ton of particulate matter, the kind that gets down into your lungs and causes disease. These are gases that would be injected into our neighborhood air next to schools, preschools, homes, and parks. We don't want these toxic trains on our streets. Please support the trail and our health and vote in favor of this EIR today. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Susan Hennes, followed by Brian Bachhaus and Scott Burns.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Susan Hennes. I live in Southland Park Hills, and I support the Del Rio Trail. In 2014, State Parks and Recreation Commission adopted a 20-year general plan and EIR that specifically removed the section of abandoned tracks from its future excursion train plans. There is no plan for an excursion train on the historic rail line. There is only a plan for the Del Rio Trail. A letter to Mr. Buford from the California State Railroad Museum Foundation dated January 3, 2019 states, quote, "A bike trail and preservation of the rails are not contradictory. The foundation's goal is not just preservation of the rails, but to prevent the city from altering the rails in ways that would preclude all future use of any kind or nature. The current project does that. 98% of the historic rails will be preserved and protected. I think that preserving this much historic fabric in a project like this is really remarkable. I support retention of the tracks because they are an historic resource. I also support interpretation of the abandoned rail line. Interpreting the rail line and explaining why the tracks are there is an excellent opportunity to educate trail users about Sacramento railroad history. I ask city council to approve the EIR and the preliminary design for the Del Rio Trail. Let's build a multi-use trail that can be enjoyed by thousands of Sacramento residents and visitors." Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Brian Bachhaus, followed by Scott Burns.
Good evening. My wife and I, we live in Southland Park. The proposed Del Rio Trail would go in the back of our house along where currently it is an abandoned railroad in disrepair, trees growing in the rails, and it's just really an unsightly type of, you know, trail currently. It is being used currently by dog walkers and walkers and runners, but it would be great to see a sidewalk or a trail back there to be a world-class type of trail. I am a supporter of the proposed Del Rio Trail. The proposed Del Rio Trail would be a wonderful amenity to the community in large. I can envision people bicycling, walking, enjoying the trail daily. When this project started more than five years ago, who would have thought that we would be here today? Because of the slipknot leadership, the city government leadership, and we have brought the Del Rio Trail from dreams to the drawing board and eventually to the completion. I am asking you for your support to approve the Del Rio Trail. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Scott Burns, followed by Chuck Hughes and Maggie Krell.
Good afternoon. My name is Scott Burns. I'm both a member of the Southland Park Neighborhood Association and the Sacramento Historical Society. I applaud city staff for design that preserves better than 98% of the existing track while still providing a safe and green trail. 98% is a far better rate than achieved in any other historic project in Sacramento history, including Old Sacramento itself. I think it's significant that the organized opposition to this EIR comes from the Railroad Museum Foundation and the Sacramento Historical Society itself. The latter with a director who sits on the Railroad Foundation Board and who hijacked the Historical Society's membership list without authorization. I have to wonder why the foundation is lobbying so hard against this design when their sponsoring agency, California State Parks, submitted an EI comment letter before you that praises the city for its preservation efforts on this project. This isn't about historic preservation. It's about tourism and dollars. The Old Sacramento excursion trains now operate at a loss. The foundation makes up for those losses with more than half a million dollars a year from its Polar Express Christmas train, and it would like a new Delta Farm-to-Fork Dinner Train to enhance its bottom line. But let's be clear, such a project, already abandoned, such a project is 15 to 20 years away. As yet, there is no plan, no design, and no funding. And despite what you may hear about wanting to keep the tracks in the Del Rio Trail area for a limited-use maintenance line, the original concept documents for the excursion train in 1980 indicate that it's financially feasible only if it's a complete run from Old Sacramento through the neighborhoods, because that's where the tourist base is located. I've tried to learn more, but the foundation has refused my request to inspect records that are supposed to be public. From records I got from state parks, I found that they've hired a PR firm to investigate our neighborhood association, spy on our meetings, and approved $10,000 for an attorney plan to fight this, plans to fight this project.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Two minutes are up.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Chuck Hughes, followed by Maggie Krell, and then Scott Schaefer.
Chuck Hughes, I'm the Southland Park Neighborhood Association Trail Chair. It's unfortunate this discussion has turned into one about trains. State Parks already had that discussion and decided not to return trains to this corridor in the Old Sacramento 20-year time horizon general plan. State Parks commented on this EIR. The director says, "I would also like to thank you for considering the protection and preservation of the rails and historic railway corridor. DPR anticipates that the goals of the city and DPR with regard to the project will be compatible. Thank you for your continued partnership on this important project. We look forward to future discussions with the city regarding the project after the EIR is certified." That's from State Parks. They own the Old Sacramento tourist train. So I want to move into the positive now and show a show of hands behind me from everyone in the neighborhood who's here to support the trail tonight. Looks like at least a slight majority. I also want to point out State Parks' one-page letter. This is the entirety of their FER comment letter. Moving on to the positives. This project works on every level. It extends the regional trail network substantially. With the Del Rio Trail, one could go from Freeport to Folsom almost entirely on an off-street Class 1 trail. At the city level, it connects the Sacramento River Trail to trails in the Pocket and Metta View, and it will connect to the Delta Shores Trail Network when that is built. This trail will be a commute corridor into downtown. At the neighborhood level, this project connects residential with commercial via alternative means. There are two grocery-anchored shopping centers directly adjacent. People will be able to comfortably run an errand on foot or bike. There are two city parks directly adjacent, more a few blocks away, three elementary schools within a few blocks. Children will use it all the time to go to school and in their out-of-school hours. In 2017, a Valley Vision report identified parks and trails as the number-one most important civic amenity to their quality of life. Sacramento is emphasizing its strength with this project, and I encourage the council to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Maggie Krell, followed by Scott Schaefer, then Jay McKeehan.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Maggie Krell, and I thank you for this opportunity. I'm a frequent bike commuter to work. It's been that way for a long time, and my kids are being raised to do the same. This trail is an incredible opportunity for people to bike from downtown to Southland Park and through Land Park. This is a public amenity that everyone can enjoy, not just people who have train tickets. This is a really great opportunity, and I'm excited about it. I used to be on the Sacramento Bicycle Safety Advisory Committee back in 2005. This is the kind of thing that we dreamed of, and now we are one vote away from, and a little bit of work away, from this coming to fruition, and I am really excited about it. I know our neighborhood's excited about it. I know many, many families will use it for many reasons, for errands, for commuting, just to have another public amenity that people can enjoy outside. So thank you so much, and I yield my time to my neighbors.
Great, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Scott Schaffner, followed by Jay McKeehan and Joe Flores.
Good evening. My name is Scott Schaffner, and I'm here in support of the trail. I think it'll be a great asset to our neighborhood. I do not particularly care to hear a loud train going through my neighborhood on a weekend and not to mention the pollution that it will be producing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Jay McKeehan.
And can you call a couple of speakers after that?
Joe Flores, Jim Brown... Joe Flores, Jim Brown, and our final speaker will be Diane Matthews.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. Just to let you know, I am a train fan. I've taken my kids, my grandkids, to Old Town and certainly enjoyed all the train amenities down there. But when a train comes through your neighborhood, it presents a different proposition. And we're very concerned as neighbors and as residents of Southland Park that the train will create some adverse impacts. Most importantly, the trail opportunity here is something that provides access for everybody. Anybody that can walk, run, bike, wheel, whatever they want to do, will have access to this great corridor and will have opportunities to get places where they can't get right now: walking, biking, or otherwise. So I think this is a great project. We strongly endorse it, and no trains, just trails. Thank you.
Great.
Joe Flores, followed by Jim Brown.
Good evening, Vice Mayor. My name is Joe Flores, Vice President of the Southland Park Neighborhood Association. I want to thank my neighbors for coming out and speaking in support of the Del Rio Trail. And also, at 5 o'clock tonight, we have the city comment received 115 ecomments, so I want to thank my neighbors who took the time to e-comment their support for this trail. At least over 100 of the 115 speaks in support of this trail. But what you didn't hear tonight was the level of effort and the level of community engagement that the opposition did. In this multi-year process, not one, not one single community meeting in my neighborhood, we have neighbors who support many things, but of all the testimony that you heard and all of the comments you heard, not one single community engagement. And that just speaks volumes. If anything else, with all the facts put aside, the level of community engagement, you can see who my neighbors are here tonight, here in support of the Del Rio Trail, and you can see the opposition who didn't necessarily identify themselves as Southland Park, it's maybe just two tonight. So I urge you to accept the final EIR. I urge you to accept the preliminary plans for this Del Rio Trail so it can be a world-class amenity to our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jim Brown, and then our final speaker, Diane Matthews.
Jim Brown, Sacramento Area Bicycle Advocates. I'm here to speak in support of the project. You've already received written comments from us. I want to make three quick points. The Del Rio Trail provides Meadowview residents with a car-free connection to the Sacramento River and American River Trail systems, and that currently doesn't exist. This serves the equity goals of the city's bicycle master plan. It's very important. Creating continuous, low-stress routes is the key to enabling more people to choose a bike instead of to drive, and this is the infrastructure we need if we're going to meet our regional air quality goals. We have many examples of abandoned urban railways given new life as walking and biking trails. The 5.5-mile Midtown Greenway in South Minneapolis was voted the best urban trail in the United States. There's the 2.6-mile Lafitte Greenway in New Orleans. There's the 8-mile Metropolitan Branch Line Trail in Washington, D.C., and the 4.8-mile S-line Urban Rail Trail in Jacksonville, Florida. There's also the Aloney Greenway in the East Bay. Locally, we have a couple of really great examples: the Sacramento Branch Line, the Sacramento Northern Bike Trail through North Sacramento, and the Clarksburg Branch Line Trail in West Sacramento. In the 42 years since the Walnut Grove Branch Line ceased operation in 1977, Sacramento has become one of the 15 large U.S. cities with the highest rates of bicycling. We're up there with Seattle and Portland and all those other cities. The Del Rio Trail is a rare valuable opportunity to build on this potential, and I urge the council to support the staff recommendation.
Great. Thank you for your comments.
Diane Matthews.
My name's Diane Matthews. I'm a registered nurse and a member of the Southland Park Neighborhood Association Board, but I'm here as a resident of Park Village Street that backs right up to the trail. And the tracks are only about six feet from my back fence, so I would just ask for livability reasons that you not approve any trains to even on an intermittent basis go down those tracks. It's, I don't think it's safe, and I don't even think it's feasible. It's not been used for, since I was in high school, and now I'm getting ready to plan my retirement. So if they were to propose some kind of feasible project, then, you know, that could be looked at, but it's just been such a long time. And also, as a nurse, I am a big fan of having healthful opportunities, and as a resident of Southland Park and Sacramento in general, I think this also adds some opportunities for microbusinesses to develop around the trail to serve the users. And we already have the Gig Go Car Program and a lot of jump bikes, which I think will just enhance each other. So I would ask you to please approve the EIR, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. I'd like to thank all of the speakers here who came in to speak and support in opposition. We're going to go ahead and turn this item over to the council. Councilmember Shanir.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. First of all, I want to thank everyone on both sides of this for coming out. I think this is an important discussion to have. You know, as a council member, I think it's always our dream when a neighborhood decides to step up and take hold of a project and move it forward, and we're really there to support. And that's exactly what's happened in this project. I've been on the council for eight years, and I believe about six of those, you guys have been working on this project. And I want to thank Chuck and Brian for their leadership and the whole Southland Park Neighborhood Association. I've been probably to at least four or five community meetings on this. I know you're shaking your head back there. You see me there. But it's just where a neighborhood has gotten together and said, "This is an amenity that we are choosing to have for ourselves, and we're willing to put in the work to make that happen." And so I want to thank you. I also want to thank Jesse Gothon on our staff for doing such a wonderful job on this, carrying through and writing the grant application to SECOG that resulted, or will result in just under $10 million now, which gets us pretty much from Sutterville South, if that's the way we go, Sutterville all the way down to Pocket Road. Then we have to find a little bit more money for the Sutterville area. I think this is a great project. I think the advocates for it have been very clear about the benefits to the neighborhood. We want more people in active transportation. That's been a big piece of what the council has really advocated for, and this is just a great trail. It gets people from the south area all the way downtown if they want to do that. And then, as someone mentioned, there are a number of elementary schools along the way that people can ride there. There are a couple of shopping centers right off the trail that people can get to. So to me, it's very, very positive as you go forward on it. I'm excited about it. My hope is, and I've always said this, I'd love to be able to cut a ribbon in about 18 months or so to actually get the trail up and running. You can clap on that one. That's fine. I also know, and we've talked with staff through briefings over a number of years here, that there have been a lot of concessions made to preserve as much of the rail as we probably, as we possibly could. I think preserving over 98% is a very high watermark, and if, you know, at some point, I don't know when funds would be available to do anything like this. You'd have to replace a lot of the tracks anyway, and I know that there are priorities for the rail folks as far as the shops go and other things. So I don't see for the foreseeable future that this would even come around. I know that the tracks that are being removed are primarily at intersections and primarily for safety reasons. So as a biker, or people who are going to be riding bikes on this trail, you don't want to see tracks going parallel with you as you're crossing those streets because getting a tire wheel caught in one of those tracks is a dangerous thing, and we need to make this safe, particularly for young people who are going to be using that. So, you know, I don't, someone mentioned that they thought there was great pressure by wealthy folks on the city. This is really a neighborhood-driven project with support, certainly my support, Mr. Hanson's support as we've gone forward on this. It covers a little bit of his district as well, just to see what we can do to be helpful and continue to move the project forward. I'm excited that RT thought it was a reasonable thing to basically, we'll be donating the land or transferring the land at no cost. It was land that they didn't need and land that we can use for this wonderful amenity for the community. With that, we've been, we're in hour five of this meeting now, so I'm going to stop and just move the item and move the staff recommendation to accept the EIR, move the project forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Shanir. There's been a motion by Councilmember Shanir and a second by Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. We have been here for a long time, so I will do my best to be brief. I have a few thank yous. First, Jay, you've done a phenomenal job championing this project, and I want to talk about some of the concerns that were raised by the rail advocates, but I really appreciate your leadership on this and helping pull through. Rarely do we get the chance to see through such a large, complicated project, and I really admire that. Jesse, you and your team have done a great job as well, and so thank you. Southland Park Neighborhood really hit it out of the park as well. I represent about half of the trackage that may be converted to trail, and I think, just like Councilmember Shanir was in the lead and I was supporting him, I think Southland Park Neighborhood did a great job championing and advocating and organizing around this and made it a little easier for LPCA just to be in the second position. So, I mean, that's a change from the way it used to be. Brian, everyone else, you've done a phenomenal job, and I want to thank you. So, I confess, when this first came up in 2013 or so, I was new on the council, and my family's a railroading family, and my great-grandmother's second husband was General Counsel at Burlington Northern. My grandpa worked for the railroad. I have a lot of passion for railroading. I've spent a lot of time with Cheryl and the museum, which is also in my district. And I didn't necessarily understand why the neighborhood didn't want trains because, in fact, most neighborhoods don't want trails. And so one of the things that I think is really refreshing and remarkable about this moment is that we've seen citizen advocates in favor of public trails through their neighborhoods. And with some of the things that Councilmember Harris is dealing with in River Park about extending the trail over there, it really truly demonstrates the commitment of these neighborhoods to connectivity, to public health, to supporting the community. And I don't think that should go unmentioned because it would be really easy to say, "No trail, no train, go away." And that is more typical of what we've heard. When RT acquired this right-of-way in the 80s, it was to build light rail. Light rail ended up going in the UP corridor instead, which is now the Blue Line that goes all the way down to Kasumnus River College. And so this land really has been sitting for a very long time waiting for something to happen. I think that the trail brings tremendous benefit to a large number of people, and that isn't to say, and this is maybe where I want to talk about some of the history here. When you look at Google Maps, and this is not a scientific study, there are huge breaks in the tracks already. It is clear that the city, the state, RT, other partners, didn't plan for this to be active. And what I would say is, not only are the tracks inoperable at this point, but largely because they're being preserved in place, which I think also is a reflection of the work that's been done. If the state later, and the state has great power and great resources, decides that it wants to do that project, it can probably eminent domain that land and acquire it from us or use the power of the purse to compel us. But I don't think it's fair for the advocates to come, after losing at the State Parks Department, to come here and say, "Our EIR, which is in front of us, which is about a trail, should try to accomplish what was already denied by the state. The state has not allocated resources, and the city's not being offered anything to build what you want." This trail doesn't preclude some change later. It really doesn't. The right-of-way is there. The great errors in history are when we get rid of transit corridors and then we cut up that right-of-way and we don't preserve it. This right-of-way isn't going anywhere, but it will be heavily used by people who need access to positive forms of active transportation. I love the person who mentioned jump bikes. I think we've seen a lot of people who will want to use shared mobility devices, but also just walking, biking, stuff for their families and kids. That's every day. And as much as I think the excursion trains are a tremendous value to the visitors to our city, the Railroad Museum is the number-one attraction in Old Sacramento and maybe beyond from a museum standpoint. We have to continue to support the museum. We have to continue to support our history, but we also aren't locked in stone. This right-of-way has been abandoned essentially. It has been vacant, and now we're going to bring new life. And I think that this is not a win-lose proposition. I think it's win-win for the community, for the city, and actually for the railroad community because the opportunity is still there in the future, but you can accomplish through the EIR and CEQA process what you want, which is us to build your project for you and compel us to do it. I just don't think that's right, which is why I'm supporting this and think that we are doing a really good thing here today and hope that I get to help you with that ribbon and that we get to celebrate together. And I would invite the railroad folks to come and join and see what we can do.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. As usual, Councilmember Hanson's comments were lucid. I'll accept the part where he dissed River Park and made me feel bad about the Two Rivers Trail. You know, this is unusual because what I'm experiencing trying to build a trail through River Park from SacState to connect the Two Rivers Trail segments is tremendous pushback from people in the neighborhood who fear that a trail will bring crime and bring elements from outside the neighborhood that will destroy their quality of life. So for me, it's tremendously refreshing to see so many neighbors come out and speak in favor of a multi-use trail through their neighborhood. You know, there were a couple of comments that really caught my ear because I've been working on this Two Rivers Trail for a couple of years. Jim Brown mentioned the equity piece. You know, this is not a trail from downtown to Southland Park. This will connect our city center all the way, well, darn near to Freeport. You know, the equity piece of this is not a joke. This means that people from South Sacramento can get downtown on a bicycle. To me, that's a tremendous and significant improvement to what we have now. Also, people often neglect the use for people who are physically impaired. So the ADA access to this length of trail through a really lovely right-of-way is also a tremendous benefit for the city. The one thing I didn't hear from the proponents of rail is what it would actually cost to affect a line, you know, in that corridor. Those tracks are decrepit. There are huge areas that are missing, and the amount of track that is proposed to be removed to create safe, at-grade crossings is minuscule compared to the type of refurbishment it would take to actually make any kind of rail use along that corridor functional. We're talking millions and millions of dollars to be able to use that for an excursion train. So as Mr. Hanson noted, this trail does not preclude that use. It's not going to be the end of your project. It would add cost, there's no doubt, but probably in the scope of the project to actually get a train running, it's not the major part by any means. So I won't carry on too much longer. I would like to say to Mr. Gothon, the project manager, that your discussion about trees was not satisfying to me. It was unsubstantive. You know, as the writer of the mitigation clause in our tree ordinance, I would like to see an analysis of what trees are going to be required to be removed because we're leaving the tracks in place. You know, by leaving the historic tracks, it means that the alignment of the trail has to be to the side, and that's going to necessitate the removal of many trees. I know that as the project moves forward, I will be looking for diameter-inch mitigation of any city street trees that are protected, you know, of any size, so that we don't lose a major portion of canopy. I mean, it doesn't make sense to promote active transportation uses and create a heat island effect and lose what we're trying to do to bolster our canopy citywide. And if you can't find the real estate on the project, then the mitigation for those diameter inches of trees can certainly benefit the South Sacramento neighborhoods where it's kind of a tree desert, where they're underplanted for urban canopy. So if we can't find the places to mitigate for tree loss onsite, let's do it offsite, as indicated by our tree ordinance. So all that being said... So, all that being said, you know, I find it refreshing that this project is coming to fruition. I really don't believe that if people want to get a train on that track at some point in the future, you have a pretty hard uphill climb, but this project will not take it out of the running. I don't think that that's a fair argument, but it would make it a little bit harder, no doubt. All that being said, I'll be in support of this.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Harris. Again, I'd like to thank all of the public who came in here, in support and opposition. It shows a conversation about the love for our city. I'd also like to take this point of personal privilege to thank those who have been active in the conversation about how do we increase healthy options of transportation. And I'll give a shout-out to any of my South Sac constituents who've been working on the Morrison Creek Project and hopefully getting a bike trail from Melga Creek Elementary School out to Willsey Wood. With that, there are no more members signed up to speak, so we'll go ahead and call the question. All those on the council, in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? No abstentions? The measure passes.[672.93][672.93][applause] We still have some meeting to conduct here, so if folks, we're gonna wait a little bit before we get to the next item, but if folks could still please be quiet and ask that you take your conversations out in the lobby, greatly appreciate it. But before we move on to the next item in public comment, we'll ask folks to exit out quietly. Thank you.[704.81][704.81][end of transcript] If folks could please take their conversations outside, we'd like to continue with the business of the evening. Thank you very much. We're gonna head and continue on here with the clerk's announcements of appointments.
We are making appointments for the Measure U Community Advisory Committee. I'll just list their names. Elizabeth Prey, Marjorie Dickinson, Amani Lucas, Dana Cable, Flojean Kofir, Gina Lejeune, Kimberly Williams, Devonte Clark, Jesse Ryan, Amanda Blackwood, Kathy Cresswell, Mashal Iobi, Alice Perez, Deborah Odo Kent, Dean Murakami. We also are changing the PMPE Committee from a four-member board to a three-member board, with members Angelique Ashby, Larry Carr, and Steve Hanson appointed.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We're gonna go ahead to council comments. Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. The city manager isn't here, but I wanted to raise an issue that came up related to our agenda tonight, which is that one council member was gonna be away, so three items got postponed, and we are now having to have a special council meeting.
Hold on, Councilmember Harris. If we're gonna ask if we can, Councilmember Hanson, sorry. Thank you, sir, for that.
We had three items postponed at the request of one council member who couldn't be here today. We had eight members in attendance for most of the meeting, and I don't think that policy is a good policy, so I've asked the city manager to revisit it. I think that because we have fewer meetings, we have relied on these evening sessions to do more work, that I would ask the city manager to revise the policy that lets any one council member request delays of multiple items simply because they cannot attend for personal reasons.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Harris?
You know, along that line, I'd like to concur with my colleague here. I think that, you know, I mean, it's our job to show up at these meetings, and certainly if I couldn't make it, I would try to phone in if an item was very important to me. In fact, Mr. Chenier once phoned in from Morocco, because he found a council vote to be that exciting to him that he was, you know, it was worth making that effort. And in fact, he had to notice the area. I don't know how much you noticed in Morocco, but, you know, there is a system to this madness, and...
Notice the alleyway.
Nice. Well, however you did it, I was impressed.
Rick called in from DC.
There you go. So, we do have a method for people who cannot make the meeting to be able to cast votes when they find it very important to do so. I would just like to say I have an AB 1234 report. I'm not certain that this is requisite, but myself and Councilmember Hanson attended the Yosemite Policymakers Conference a weekend or two, two weekends ago, and it was a wonderful time. We learned a lot about how to make cities better. We talked about transportation. We talked about housing, a little bit about homelessness, so very worthwhile conference, and we just wanted to make note of that.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Chenier?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. One announcement and then a couple of requests for our Assistant City Manager. One is, we wanted to know what kind of the inventory that we have at the city for translation services. So, we put on a community meeting last week. We actually found and hired a Hmong translator and also a Spanish, but I think as we try to engage with the community more and more, having those resources, and it was pretty costly for us, but having those resources available would be really helpful. So, if you could find out, I don't know what we have.
Which resources?
Translation services.
Okay.
The second item I had is, I'd like to bring a resolution to the council around hate crimes against folks who are homeless as we move more and more into this. I think really putting out front what some of the challenges are would be important, and I can work with the city manager on what a resolution would look like on that. Other cities have done it. I think it's important for us to do. And then, I also just want to announce that we'll have a community meeting this Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Sierra Two in Curtis Park, and the subject of that will be the shelter that we're proposing on the Caltrans site on X and Alhambra. So, if folks want to come and let their opinions be known about that, again, this Thursday, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Sierra Two. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Chenier. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. A couple of announcements. John F. Kennedy is gonna have a service event Saturday, April the 6th. This will be a place for you to go and get rid of all of your free e-waste. They'll have e-waste, document shedding, and a rummage sale to support the class of 2020, the ban, and the color guard, and we encourage you to go out there and support that. We also have some dates that we want to put on your calendar. April the 13th, from 11:00 to 4:00, will be the Shabazz Safety and Family Fund Day, which will take place at the Valley High Park, and then the Easter Egg Extravaganza, which will come later in April, April the 20th, at Goshabend Park and Mesa Grande Park. So, there'll be a great opportunity for your kids to come out for egg hunt, photos with the Easter Bunny, and much, much more.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. For District Six, for the Assistant City Manager, we also have had some challenges with translation services, and particularly in District Six, we have to translate not only in Spanish, but Mian, Hmong, Vietnamese, and Russian. So, I think having something that is substantive for the city is an appropriate one. I do think we have something for 311, but I don't know if it assists with other resources we may have. Also, I'd like to concur on the issue of how we agendize items or move things off items, and moving the order and the business of the day, I think, is particularly critical. We have issues sometimes that we, that are out of our control, but I think looking at that policy would be important. Now, some announcements here. District Six Pacific, I want to encourage folks who are in the Nepenthe Neighborhood to come out to the Nepenthe Neighborhood Association meeting. They meet on April 3rd, Wednesday, at 5:30 p.m. at the Nepenthe Clubhouse. Citywide, I'd like to encourage everyone to come join the Sacramento chapter of the Labor Council for Latin American Advancement, LACLA, to the third, what was it? I can't remember which annual this is, but the, what is it? Ninetieth?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth, oh yeah. The 19th Annual Cesar Chavez March, this Saturday, March 30th, at 10:00 a.m., beginning at Southside Park, at Sixth and T Street. We hope you'll come and celebrate the life of Cesar Chavez and the legacy he did of, for providing community service. Also, we're gonna have a grand opening for the Sacramento Dance Lab on that same Saturday in the evening at 6:00 p.m. at the atrium. I want to recognize Isela Perez, who has been working to create a new space for the community so that they can practice and learn and participate in the art of active, of dance. With that, no more council comments, so we'll go ahead and move to the public comment item of the agenda.
George Rea?
How many do we have?
We have 10.
We have 10 items. 10 people signed up to speak at the public comment section.
Avinadele?
I'm gonna pass.
Michelle Paraset?
And I'll ask the clerk if she could remind folks the order of decorum, and also if, read three names at once so that folks are prepared and not rushed to come up to the podium. Thank you.
And we'll go ahead and continue with you. You have two minutes. Good evening, councilmembers and Vice Mayor. I'm Michelle Paraset. I am with Public Advocates. We are part of the Housing for Sacramento Coalition, and some of our members are here with us now. Last October, Housing for Sacramento submitted over 44,000 signatures of Sacramento voters calling for a city election to tackle skyrocketing rents and rising eviction rates. It's called the Sacramento Community Stabilization and Fair Rent Charter Amendment. After all of these months, the city council and the city clerk still haven't announced if the election will be in March or November of 2020. In recent conversations with the city clerk, we understand that they are likely to stall the vote until November 2020, but fair treatment and affordable rents can't wait that long. We were forced to take this battle to the ballot when this council refused to support the compromise protections we negotiated with the mayor and with industry interests before they walked out on negotiations. Councilmembers Hanson, Gera, and Jennings tried to hijack the progress we made with the mayor with a hollow measure allowing non-binding mediation and 18-month leases. With the largest number of renters in his district, we are very disappointed with Councilmember Hanson's proposal. He should be leading the way for renters citywide. Mr. Gera and Mr. Jennings, we also expect much more from you. Our first request is that Housing for Sacramento, we're here tonight to ask you to stop delays and set the charter amendment vote for next March. We also ask that instead of taking up the Hanson proposal next month, the council come back in April with a public proposal that includes limits on rent increases, protections from unfair evictions, and a city commission to review landlord tenant complaints. Only negotiating with the building industry, apartment association, and the realtors, as Hanson, Gera, and Jennings are doing, will not yield a positive result for tenants. These industries are profiting from the skyrocketing rents.
Yeah, they are.
We ask that one of you please take up the challenge of doing something meaningful before over 150,000 renters head to the ballot box next year.
Thank you for your comments.
Renters need real help now. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Paraset, and also thank you to the folks from Housing for Sacramento.[1391.15][1391.15][applause]
Ms. Hesseing, followed by David Andre and Victor Okio.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council. I just wanted to say that in July in 2017, a report was published on SB 2's ediment to state housing element law protecting citing of emergency shelters. Shelters have been denied or unpermitted for unlawful reasons because the location was deemed too close to schools or daycare centers. This makes it sound as if all unhoused persons are dangerous or predatory. And may I remind you that many unhoused persons are also families with children, and they're not necessarily all predatory. The by right zone or zones must be large enough to meet the jurisdiction's unmet need for shelter. SB 2 asks for basic requirements that cities and counties have at least one zone that permits emergency shelters without discretionary approval or by right or zones, and must be identified in the housing element, and must be large enough to meet the jurisdiction's need for shelter. My question is, why are there no zones in Sacramento for emergency shelter, and why this hasn't been addressed? As we see right now, there is a number of tents, and there's a number of unhoused people that are seeking shelter underneath the eaves of City Hall because they have nowhere else to go. These people are not lazy. They are not all dangerous. They are not all predatory. They are people in need, and like, they were just saying that rents are skyrocketing. I just gotta notice that my rent is going up, and I could very well be in the same situation as these other unhoused people. And I thank you for listening and for your time.
Thank you for your time, yeah. And I see Commissioner, Youth Commissioner Piper Pell in the audience. It's always good to see our high school youth here. Thanks for being here this evening.
David Andre, Victor Okaro, Sally Shapiro.
That's great, Mr. Gera. Let's talk about youth. Let's talk about youth in the city of Sacramento. And now the big daddy rat isn't here, you know, you guys don't have to be so afraid. Okay, so I'm gonna put something up here that you guys are violating these major laws, and a bunch of us, for years, have been telling you this, but we didn't have all this stuff, because most of us didn't even go to high school, who are having to do this while paid advocacy groups pimp us, and some of you guys are in on it and some of you guys aren't. Kind of like with the police, you know? You guys make a line around us and you kill us, and then it's a real thin line, right? Anyway, this is from something called SB 2, Senate Bill 2, adopted December 17, 2013. If you could zoom in on that part right there, it talks about what's called shelter by right. Now, this is adopted by the city December 17, 2013, and if I can read it here, it says, "Emergency shelters referred to as temporary residential shelters in the city's zoning code are allowed by right in the C4, M1, and M2 zones. The city has identified 121 vacant sites of more than one acre." Now, this is adopted December 17, 2013. This refers to something in Senate Bill 2, which is required, because we get it off you guys' website, this official one. So, people that are saying y'all don't know where we can have shelters, this talks about it in the law from your websites. So, which one of you guys know about this, and which one of you guys is covering up, because people are dying on the streets of Sacramento because of this stuff?[1648.71][1648.71][applause] Continuing. "Shelters have been denied or unpermitted for unlawful reasons."[1657.21][1657.21][applause]
Thank you, Mr. Andre.
Victor Okago, Selly Shapiro, and LB.
I have a tough last name, so...
The other way?
So, my name is Victor O'Jack, and maybe for the record, though I don't typically do this, I'm a former Palo Alto City Council member and mayor of the city of Palo Alto. While I was serving in office, I had one of my children kill himself, and I have been on a mission ever since. And one of the reasons why I'm here, as we were here in September previously, is to ask that this city adopt a city suicide prevention policy. Just to let you know, that's not a unique thing to ask. I've done this 30-plus times. We have always gotten a policy put in place. Some of the times, it's taken a little time, and I understand that. Every time the vote has happened, it's always been unanimous. We had a problem in this state, and it's now starting to come to light more. So, I'm here again to request that the city do a suicide prevention policy. Earlier this month, the 10th largest city in the U.S., the city of San Jose unanimously voted, I kept my track record going, unanimously voted to prioritize doing a city policy, so they'll have one before the year's over with. And if you don't know, the difference between San Jose and Sacramento is, it's a far larger city and has half the rate. Now, the chart that's on here is just from a report that was just issued by the California Department of Public Health, and what that report says is, it shows how suicides are going up in this state. But why I put this here is, they singled out four counties to be identified, and one of them is Sacramento. The rates in Sacramento and in the city, as was shown in a 2011 art- The rates in Sacramento and in the city, as was shown in a 2011 article, are way disproportionate to what's going on in the rest of the state.
Thank you for your comments. Your two minutes are up.
So I hope that you adopt a city policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanson.
Mr. Ojakin, I can never say your name right. Ojakin?
Close enough.
I think I mentioned to you earlier that about a month ago, I requested we add this to our law and legislation log, which begins the policy development process. And honored tonight to know that Chris Conlon, our Assistant City Manager, has been the lead staff person identified on it, so I'd encourage you to connect with Mr. Conlon. And as soon as we can have that policy put together, and if you have resources, please submit them, but we'll hopefully get it back to the City Council in due time.
Mr. Ojakin, I also encourage you... Ojakin?
I don't know.
Good enough.
Yeah. I'd encourage you also to connect with the Sacramento State campus. They're doing a suicide prevention walk that's being led by the students on this particular issue. Thank you.
So I've emailed some of them. I will leave you the policy that the city of San Jose is going to use. It's the one that Palo Alto adopted, and I wrote it. Excuse me, sir.
Yes.
Yeah. Just want to thank you personally for the work that you're doing, and I'm very sorry for the loss of you, son. Thank you.
Sally Shapiro, followed by LB, then Kevin Bolts.
Good evening, Ms. Shapiro.
Good evening. Sally Shapiro, I'm from... Sculptor from the Kennedy Gallery. There was a time when I was young, living on the road was lots of fun. That was back in 2001. Now I've seen now, I find my way home. Everything seems so far away. Good times and friends, they all stray. I'd walk far but get nowhere. I see a lot of people who don't care. I wanted a family that dreamed I, that American dream, it so lied. I just wish there was a place, a home where I could find peace. The birds, the ants, the spiders, and the bears can have a twig, a hill, or a lair. But we must fight with tooth and nail just for crumbs in a holy pail. The skyscrapers go up, the pace stays the same. The years go by, the rich go insane. What are all those buildings for? Tick or tape laws to keep us poor. Why do you compete for the biggest towers? I think that's been done many times before. Why not create the sweetest hours by allowing neither rich nor poor? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Shapiro, for your time.
LB, followed by Kevin Bolts and Chris Miller.
It's going to be hard to follow that, but we're still here. The revolution continues. Are we there yet? The mayor, the city manager, the chief, the police union, all involved in this collusion. All have chosen the side of the oppressors. The DA, the Attorney General said execution was justified. Are we there yet when decorum and respectability are scrutinized more than lies? Deception continues to sanitize homelessness, death from hunger and exposure. Are we there yet when speaking the truth is denied? We can no longer tolerate your bigotry and white lies. Send your Gestapo's, send your uniformed dogs. We may be attacked, but our voices, the revolution, will live on, condemning dissent. Anyone that doesn't speak quietly, the unpleasant and inconvenient truth is vilified. Are you ready? The speakers, the protesters, the conscientious objectors have arrived. Even as ignorance reigns supreme and justice is based on a whim, fear of a cell phone, fear of people running away, fear of profanity, are we there yet when the judges, the DA, the leaders collude? Are we there yet when activists disappear, later found dead? Always inconclusive cause of death. Justice has a self-inflicted wound to the head. Justice has retreated in the river of tears. How else would we justify their bloodthirst and fear? Are we there yet? The Shoah, the killing field, the internment, the kidnappings of brown and black babies, the complacent and complicit good Nazis accepting Jim Crow justice, repeating white supremacy's genocidal history? Are we willing to rise as the people collectively? Are we there yet to speak, to stand up and reject their lies?
Thank you for your comments.
Are they there? We are here, no matter the urge to divide. We must rewrite our own history or die. Standing up together, one voice without a doubt. Courage, sacrifice will be louder than injustice. Peace will only come after liberation. We stand here to reclaim this revolution.
Better pay attention. Kevin Bolts.
Uncomfortability is expected. These are messages I received on Thursday, March 7th. You made me shed tears this morning watching this video. My uncle would be grateful for you. With all these wrongful killings, I asked myself a couple days ago, did anyone hear about my uncle? My Uncle Joseph May. And to watch this video, fucking hate y'all, and to hear someone speak on this situation again about these horrible individuals did to him means a lot to me, because I know people do remember him, and his story is going to be forever heard. Y'all can't even fucking look at me. Thank you so much from my family to you. Please send me these videos so I can share them with my family. Hearing you say his name meant the world to me, because I know there are people who heard and seen his story. I just wish the world knew him for who he was, a loving, caring, and just overall amazing human being who never deserved to pass the way he did. On February 22nd, I gave birth to his great niece, and before pushing her out, I cried in the hospital bed because I realized he would never get to meet her or see her. My baby laughs every day, and it's... I know it's because my Uncle Joseph is talking to her. I really can't put into words my emotions or feelings into words, but I just want you to know that you are speaking for so many families and victims. Keep doing what you're doing. Your voice means something. Promise me you'll keep that same energy today, because those evil people, that would be you, need to hear it just the way you said it. Thank you. My family and I have been sending your video all around, are in awe of the way you spoke up, for us and Uncle Joe. As soon as I am able to move, my baby has her shots, I would love for you to come and meet her. A small thing about my Uncle Joe is his favorite word was "playa," and I know he would tell you you were a playa for the way you spoke up for him and my... and us. My baby's name is Harlem J. Lacy, and the J. stands for Uncle Joe. You made a difference in so many lives today. When your employees extrajudicially execute civilians, they destroy not that life, but every adjacent life. The cousin of Daryl Richards, don't even cut me off, told me the hardest part is every holiday becomes a terrible reminder. Birthdays are wakes. Every Christmas is a funeral. To quote Devonte Clark, "The poverty is out of control, the rent is too high, and the gang banging has to stop. The City Council and the mayor has failed you all." Thank you.
And Janie Ricketts-Bryce?
Okay, no other comments from the public with our business of the day concluded? Oh, wait, we are... is this Ms. Janie? Thank you, come on in, sorry.
Good evening. Distinguished councilmembers, my name is Janie Ricketts-Bryce, and I have been a member of the downtown community for 37 years professionally. I've owned a commercial building at 20th and T Street for 21 years, 16,000 square foot on a little over a half acre. My tenants turned me in four years ago because I allowed construction to be done without a permit. I immediately addressed that issue with my code enforcement officer. He actually said, wow, property owners calling me. Well, the building actually is sound, other than some walls. And the reason that I'm here is that I have done a great deal of discovery on my building and what can be the highest and best use for it. Even though the city of Sacramento designated, because it runs on the tracks, that I had to close up my as-built doors that exited onto Union Pacific property and gut the entire 16,000 square feet, take everything back to the walls. And I told them I wasn't going to do that. And I have an architect that says that my plans, other than these three silly walls, are all up to code. So I have dealt with many building officials. I was told by a high-ranking official that the powers-to-be think I should just go ahead, let... sell it and let it be developed. And I said, I'm not selling my building. Originally, when it was designated, oh, shoot. Well, I want to do daycare, okay?
Thank you, ma'am. Your two minutes are up.
And daycare, I know.
Ms. Ricketts-Bryce, we have our Public Works Director here, and our Assistant City Manager will have them speak with you right after this council meeting to address your issue.
Thank you, because it's very important.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I know Janie pretty well from the Midtown Association Board. I was wondering if Ryan DeVore couldn't talk to you. I see Ryan in the back. He's been seen, and he's coming out.
Coming out here.
He's the head of the Community Development Department, and I think he's the one that can help fix your issue. And please follow me with me if it doesn't work.
Thank you, because I truly have been trying to fluff it out.
He's sitting in the back here. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, we're going to adjourn the meeting at 7:05 a.m.